Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting of October 24th, 2017. First item is a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, several weeks ago, we did a meeting procedures. There's a few new people in the audience tonight, so I'm just going to do a quick recap. The flow of the meeting is listed on the agenda, and we ask that if you have a comment that may be under Old Business or New Business, that we wait, that we ask that you wait until the public comment section to make that comment. It just makes the meeting flow a little easier. However, under Old Business, there are a few names listed. These are people who have spoken before on the, um, on the business and may be invited to come back up and speak during that time. But otherwise, public comments are welcome during the public comment section. And there has been some feedback that it hasn't been long enough, so we have extended the public comment to three minutes, and that is per person, not per subject. And once you leave the podium, your time is over regardless of how much time was used. As a reminder, if the public has an agenda item, that will take more than the allotted time. They can contact the town administrator and be added to the agenda for the next week. The Board of Selectmen reserves the right to call on any person in the meeting room at any time during the meeting. Members of the public who speak under public comment will be invited back to the podium the following week if their items are placed under Old Business, such as you'll see tonight, and we'll provide a follow-up on that item. If requested, the said member of the public will be able to engage in conversation at that time. So, what was the other thing I wanted to, I just wanted to mention that whispers out there or comments are picked up and kind of muffle what's going on on the television. So if you can keep your whispers and comments to add for after the meeting, that would be great. Did I forget anything?
I think I covered it.
Okay. So, we'd like to present a check to the Southern Maine Veterans Cemetery Association. Are they here tonight?
Ron Reevard.
This is to Ron Reevard?
Yeah, can I use...
Yes, definitely.
Yes.
My name is Ron Reevard. I'm Secretary of the Southern Maine Veterans Cemetery Association. I'm here to receive a donation from the Town of Acton to our association, and I want to thank the Board of Selectmen and the citizens of Acton for supporting us in our work, and I salute you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Put your hand on the check if you want.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second that.
All in favor? A motion to approve the minutes of last week.
Make a motion to approve the minutes of last week?
I'll second that.
Was it last week? Yes, we're all caught up. All in favor? Okay, Department Head Committee Chair updates. We have the Town Forest Conservation.
My name is Tom Cashin. I'm speaking on behalf of the Town Forester Conservation Committee meeting. I have two quick items I need some help with clarifying how the Board is thinking on the proposal that we brought up with you last week, last time we met on the 16th pertaining to Joel Lankowski's letter that, in his opinion, a public easement exists over the Hebo-Hibo Road, and we want to make sure that the Board is in sync with that and that we can proceed with our proposal to develop the trail for more recreational uses. And the second question is, can we find out tonight if Michelle has made a decision about monies that may or may not be available for the proposal of a forest management plan as proposed last week to you folks by Steve Bodkin? Thank you.
It's on the agenda, a little further down.
Okay.
I can't speak on the trail, though. That's on you.
So, that's on, the management plan is on Old Business, and the public easement?
Yeah, he's, they're looking for, and correct me if I'm wrong, Tom, they're looking for the okay from you to start a trail on the Town Forest property on Hebo-Hibo Road.
This would be developed with a, with a plan with, with public input, and we would come back to the Select Board, obviously, before, I would probably go to town meeting, I would imagine.
So you're starting with a plan first?
Yes.
Okay.
We hope to, with your blessing.
Mm-hmm.
That's what we need. And this is hinging on the opinion letter that we got from Joel Lankowski that I hope you folks have had a chance to glance at. Thank you.
I feel confident.
I do, too.
Our next meeting is Conservation Forests on the 21st. So...
Okay.
At 7:00.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Is he, so he's looking for a blessing?
That's what it sounds like.
To move forward. Yes, I would, I would move.
Yeah, I don't see any issue with that.
I agree.
Get a plan together, anyway.
Yep.
So your, your committee's going to work together and create a plan that the Board will review in detail before you start doing any actual work?
Absolutely.
Yep.
Thank you. Moving on to Road Committee.
Hi, Cindy Hart, Road Committee. We were here last week and just didn't have enough time in two minutes to, to finish, but I'd like to start with the bridges. And I've gotten some information to Elise, and I think it's been passed on to everybody else about in 2009, the Selectmen of Wakefield contacted us, and, and the canal bridge essentially is not ours. We own the approach to it, but not the bridge itself. So this work that was done last week was really, you know, kind of ahead of schedule. And I'm asking you to, as a Board, put the bridges back to the Road Committee. We have background on them. We have five members that have some time. We have an engineer, three of us are licensed in erosion control, and we started work on this before. The original Canal Bridge Committee consisted of myself, Tom Gore, Linda Shire, Pam, now Wigan from Wakefield, and one of the Browns over there. And I think this is where to start. And I understand that the Road Commissioners do not really have the time to do this, and where the information has been missing from, you know, it's been hard to find old information. I've been going through what I have in old notes, and the, the Road Committee has always dealt with these bridges. Also, on the inspection reports, there's been question about who owned what. And when you look at the state inspection report, it says on the first page, if you go down to percent of responsibility, this is the row bridge. We are 50%. We're halfway across. Now, that's from the State of Maine. The State of New Hampshire also complies with that. We do have one problem with these bridges, and with the canal bridge, the State of Maine has made an error in their 2015 report that needs to be checked up upon because they are giving us, when you look down at the percentage of responsibility for canal bridge, 50%. That's not true, and we do not want to pick up half of that bridge. The design has already been made for it, and the work, I think the Road Committee should meet and go over the work that the Road Commissioner presented last week because a lot of that is valuable information. And once we're established as to who is paying for what, I think that this committee is very better prepared to handle it. The other thing was to move on to the turnarounds, and I don't think that we can ignore liability issues. This is not a question of a full easement. It's called a driveway easement, a turnaround easement. It's printed up by the MMA, and it very explicitly explains what you can do. And, and no, we can't go in and, it's not, we don't own it. It allows us to turn around, and it covers us legally. And these were actually the first few that the Road Committee had taken up. We wanted to take a look at the rest of the plowing routes and see where perhaps we should step in and get another one signed. And again, this was something we were doing as a committee. So it's up to you people to decide who's doing what, but we can't kind of let stuff slide. The maintenance on the bridge that I mentioned, on the row bridge, has not been done still. Every time before I come to this meeting, I drive down and I look, and I hope, and it's still not done. We have 500 cars a day that depend upon that, and we have rebar exposed on, on the top of it that could be treated, and a couple of other things that can be taken care of. A group of neighbors that are very close to this have volunteered to do some help, and I know we have volunteer help on other projects around town, so there must be a way that we can do that and just get it done. I understand the Road Commissioners don't have time to do this, but it was always a real feature. People like coming over and seeing the waterfall, and just to see the graffiti now and, and the debris, it's kind of sad. We don't have that many really beautiful sights in Acton. So I wish you would reconsider on what the Road Committee, when I read again the Michael Stoltz letter, he said that we were to be an advisory force, and we were to be, help them be more efficiently, thoughtfully, and economically run for the roads, and that's what we attempt to do. Save you money, get it in the right place, and, and do what the other people can't do. So it's up to you guys now.
When is your next meeting?
Well, we're going, I'm trying to schedule that now. I feel it should be fairly soon. And I sent out an email to members, and I'm waiting for them to get back to us. And also, Elise, and check with you and with Will.
Well, what did we find out about the easements?
I called surrounding towns. I talked to Lebanon Road Commissioners, Shafley Road Commissioners, and Alfred Road Commissioners. One of the towns doesn't do it at all, just like Acton. One of the towns does it 100%, and one of the towns does it only on pond roads that they have easements for and not on the rest of them. So it was pretty much right down, split down the middle.
When you say pond roads, do you mean private?
Yes.
Okay.
Any more questions for me, or?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I know a few years ago, we, well, how many years ago? Probably four years ago, five years ago, we were close to having the easements signed. I don't remember what, why we didn't. I don't know whether it was a matter of who was going to go to them or how that was.
I mean, if, if these easements just talk about use in the driveway and not taking, taking land or ownership, it makes sense to have it done, just for liability reasons.
Yeah, I, I mean, we got three towns out there that are doing it three different ways. We don't know which one's right. Probably have an easement in place as long as we're not taking ownership of anything. It's just simply a subject saying that, yes, we can turn around in the driveway. It's probably not a bad idea.
I agree.
And I thought they were all done and ready to be signed.
So what's the direction of the Board? Am I contacting the Road Commissioners and telling them that you've decided that? Are we, are you delegating it to the Road Committee? Because remember, the Road Commissioners last week didn't want you to, didn't think it was necessary to move forward, so you have to give me specific direction on what you want.
They didn't feel that they wanted to fix something that wasn't broken, but sometimes you have to before some, I mean, something happens and becomes an issue. You can call and ask the Road Commissioners if they want help from the Road Committee to do it, if they don't have time.
So you want an easement, driveway easement, turnaround on, on every property that they turn around on? And we're going to ask them if they want to go out and collect signatures, or if they want the Road Committee to do it on their behalf?
Yes.
Is that right, Ed?
Yeah. Yep.
I think probably, I mean, I think I'd actually point it in the direction of the Road Committee. You know, they want a project, there's a project.
Right, but should we talk with the...
We know how the Road Commissioners feel about it, so, I mean, in the course of the whole thing, it's only going to protect them, so. You want to talk to Cindy about that, or?
Yeah. I mean, I feel like we should ask Dave and Scott first.
Okay.
And my guess is they're going to say, yeah, the Road Committee can do it.
Yep, okay.
If I had to guess, but...
Any direction on the bridges or dams that she brought up, or?
I'm curious, because I did read that information from 2007 or 2009, that they had all this work led up to having it done, but then I don't know if New Hampshire dropped the ball or the state, because I think they were looking for state aid, to find a contact information from that letter and see where they're, where New Hampshire is at.
Because New Hampshire hasn't gotten a hold of us or anything. I mean, right?
Not unless, I mean, David has said more than once that he's, you know, he's in communication with these people, and he's handling it, so.
Right.
Do we want to ask him if he's had any conversations with New Hampshire?
From, from Wakefield, not necessarily DOT, but the Selectmen in Wakefield or the Road Commissioners in Wakefield?
Do you remember what?
Uh, we worked with, well, our committee worked with Wake, with Wakefield. And the Selectmen at that time turned over the canal bridge to the Road Committee. So we were dealing with Pam, and I have some other names here from Wakefield. But now they were waiting for the bridge to come back up again. That's a State of New Hampshire project, and I'm assuming that's going to happen if we get an infrastructure bill through. They'll be looking for that. That bill is, that bridge is more advantageous to Wakefield than to us.
If you're not done, you can, I was going to have you come to the mic. You done?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what is the direction for the Board?
I'm going to look up the, the name that I saw on the paperwork, and I'll, I'll either have Dave call the people in Wakefield or myself.
I could probably get a hold of Pam, too. I know Pam, the one that was on the committee.
Yeah. I just want to know what happened on their part, and then we'll go from there. Old Business Management Plan, Steve, follow-up with Steve Bodkin. Is he here tonight?
No, doesn't look like it. Pretty simple, unfortunately. The Forest Committee has no money in their account. It was all allocated, moved to Goat Hill, so the Treasurer certainly not, you know, doesn't, advises against authorizing any money to be spent. He was pretty clear last week to say that he didn't know if anything needed to be cut, and he wouldn't know until he walked acre for acre. So without, without knowing, you have, you have no way of paying him. So possibly you can bring it to the townspeople next year as a warrant article, but if you end up not cutting it after he puts a management plan together, you have no way to pay him.
And he, his stipend isn't enough to cover it?
Well, that was the other part of it. I mean, so he gets a $500 a year stipend. I haven't taken the time to pull exactly what that covers, but that was another thing that, that she brought up, so I'd have to look into, into that. He gets that stipend every year regardless. So I'm not sure what the original, you know, what, what originally he was supposed to do for that stipend, like the health officer, for example, she gets a stipend, and we know that she's supposed to do A, B, and C. You know, I'm not sure what his duties are, so we'd have to look into that, but...
Okay.
And at this point, I don't see you moving forward unless you...
We have no money.
Yeah, I mean, like you say, we're not guaranteed that we're going to do anything out there. We probably will, but we're not guaranteed, so let's not spend money that we don't...
You can't spend money you don't have.
You can't spend money.
Yeah.
So we'll look for a warrant article then for next year, if that's what they want to do.
It's up to you guys.
Yeah.
And maybe, you know, find out what, you know, what the forester does do for his stipend. You know, I don't know whether that's considered part of what he does for his stipend, or, I mean, it might have been years ago, and it would have been probably enough to cover, but he's been this forester for how long? A number of years?
Mm-hmm.
So, yeah. Okay.
Sand bids.
So last week, we opened, our Pepin and Son at 9:50 delivered. We had Landscapers Depot at 9:25, Gorm Sand and Gravel at 9:75. I did speak to FR Carroll, and their numbers were swapped, so they're at $11 per yard. I spoke to both Road Commissioners. They went out and spoke to all four companies, and they spoke to, they spoke to the companies, and they, they got sand samples, and it's their recommendation that you award it to our Pepin and Son at 9:50 a yard, which essentially is 25 cents over the lowest one of Landscapers Depot, pointing out that they didn't bid on the 3/8 inch that was originally asked Their recommendation, so it's the low bid based on 3/8.
That was our Pepin.
May I make a comment on that?
No.
No? So we're supposed to make a recommendation?
Well, that's their recommendation. You have to choose one.
Theirs was for our Pepin.
Correct.
And they've been out, and they've checked the soil.
I'm sorry?
They, they went out, and they've checked.
And they're always delivered, not, they never pick up?
Correct. 90, 90, I would say 90, 95% of the time it's delivered. I don't know how much they use to pick up, but...
Yeah, I think they only pick up in case of an emergency.
I mean, last year, we know that they didn't use, they didn't buy any at all, so...
Right. Yep.
They did pick up. They probably charge us, you know, for their time to pick it up, so...
Yeah, they would. They'd have to charge us for trucking.
And just for clarity, because I don't, just for clarity, because I don't want this to come back, it's possible that they sampled only three of the four because their, because of history with one of the companies and what they believe from their, their knowledge in years past that, just, you know, they might not have visited all four, but that's the recommendation they've asked me to pass along, too.
If that's a recommendation of the Road Commissioners, I am going to make a motion that we go with our Pepin and Son.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
They're happy with it.
So last week, Mr. Roland Waterhouse pointed out to the Board that the parking lot paved, the parking lot patio at Goat Hill wasn't 60 by 60, which was in the bid, so Carl Davis is here to speak to the Board about that.
Yeah, I don't know. Hi, I'm Carl Davis, working on the Goat Hill project. I don't know how, how many people saw that area before we started working on it. Pretty rough ground. Goat Hill is pretty rough, pretty rocky, so it was a little hard to tell. I mean, we did flag trees, we did hit some ledge. Where you come into the parking lot, we also hit some ledge in the back of the parking lot. According to the, the plan from the planning board, we're supposed to have 10 spaces, 9 by 18. So the depth of the parking lot would actually be 45 feet, which we do have covered. The width would be 60, which we are short on that corner where the ledge is. We could, in the future, add probably three more spaces on the right-hand side in the back quite, quite easily. I mean, obviously, it would be a gravel cost, but we could add three more spaces there. As far as what the planning board has, has asked for, we have the, the spaces there.
It was hot, it was hot top, didn't...
Yep.
So, yep.
Yeah, it's hot top. And that is exactly the 15 by 24, the hot top. Yeah.
I mean, it meets what the planning board had. I mean, even though, was it you that told us it was going to be 60 by 60, or that was a round number based on?
It was kind of a, when we flagged out there, it was kind of a round number. I mean, it was, you know, you're flagging trees. I mean, you might have been three feet off here or, or whatever. It wasn't...
Yeah, I'm more concerned with you having the, the spaces that the planning board said you had to have.
Yeah, we definitely covered that.
If you've got that, then I'm happy.
Yeah.
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 Sorry, I haven't been out there to see it yet, but you...
I have, looks good.
Yeah.
Yep.
The trails, the trails coming along, too, I mean, they've got, I think they're going to lose tomorrow, it sounds like, but they'll, they'll keep, keep going on it, so, yeah.
Okay, good. Well, thanks for coming in and explaining.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you.
I'm going to check with Roland, make sure there's any follow-up questions on that.
Roland, do you have any follow-up questions on that? Where are you?
Where am I?
Oh, there you are. Roland, do you have any follow-up questions on that?
Do I have any follow-up questions?
Or comments, since you brought it up?
I did bring it up. I believe that when the town puts something out for bid, and the town came up with specifications, not through Rivers Land Trust, they said 60 by 60. It doesn't measure 60 by 60. If you want to sign off on it, obviously, that's your right to. But again, you know, you all put out a bid for a 60 by 60 parking lot. The entryway is a paved apron. The rest of the parking lot is gravel. I'm not sure, I don't remember what the bid was put out for. I know that the gravel was donated.
It actually turned out to not be donated. Three Rivers paid for it.
Well, initially, it was supposed to be donated.
Right.
Okay. But again, you know, 60 by 60 was what was put out for a bid by the town. Okay?
Thank you.
Holiday closures.
Just a follow-up from last week's meeting. The only one that we didn't, you didn't make a final decision on was Christmas. I spoke to the staff, and they'd rather see you closed the day after rather than the Friday before, so work regular hours on Friday. Christmas falls on Monday, so we'll be closed Monday and Tuesday.
New Business Zoning Board of Appeals Appointment.
Last week, I brought you a appointment for William Williams for Zoning Board of Appeals. The ordinance actually very clearly specifies how many regulars and how many alternates, and I was not aware that he was being appointed as an alternate, so we did not swear him in, and I created a new one. According to the ordinance, it's a two-year appointment as an alternate, because all of the other five are filled.
To William Williams, the Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the State of Maine, hereby appoint you as Zoning Board of Appeals alternate within and for the Municipality of Acton until June 30th, 2019.
Make a motion, and we appoint William Williams, Zoning Board of Appeals alternate.
I'll second that.
Warrant and Finance Procedural Packet.
So I forwarded you via email and also printed off hard copies, the 10-page document that Mr. Gore presented to Warrant and Finance, and they have been tirelessly working on as a full committee. I'm not sure if you want to invite Dr. Williams up, but essentially, their committee voted to move this forward. I forwarded you the email that said that they were looking forward to working with you on it. It does reference the school in many sections as the Treasurer and also the town. You guys had a chance to speak with the Treasurer in regards to her concerns or her thoughts on the document. When the superintendent and finance director also reviewed it, they called and asked to be placed on the agenda, so instead of putting them under department heads, I thought I would put them where the document was, so I know they've got some thoughts that they want to share with you about it as well. And I think that Warrant and Finance needs some sort of direction from the selectmen as far as how they proceed with this.
Do you want to speak, fun?
Well, I can.
Yeah.
I mean, I've got some thoughts on this. I mean, I appreciate them putting it, well, Tom Gore basically put this together initially. Tom has always had an issue with having reserve, reserve accounts, which I have had many discussions with him, that the town needs reserve accounts, because if you're not putting money away for fixing your infrastructure and updating your fire equipment and roofs on buildings and everything else that the town has, you know, you can be here with a lot of big bills all at once. So basically what I see this is it's, you know, it's just wordsmithing on a lot of, on a lot of things. Our auditor has not had an issue with the way that they've been voted on at town meetings. The auditor has looked at this every single year over the last, well, I've been here five and a half years. Some of these accounts have come, some have gone. If the auditor doesn't have a problem with the way we're doing things, I don't see a problem, I guess, is my biggest thing. I appreciate them coming forward with this and I appreciate the, the effort put into it, but, you know, I, I just don't see the need personally.
Do you have any comments?
I don't.
Don't?
I don't.
I have to agree with Ed and the reserve accounts needing to put money aside for special projects and labeling them as, as so. As far as how the reserve accounts were established, like, like Ed said, the auditors has, has been through it and there weren't any red flags.
No. Maybe it would be worth sending this, the auditor has not seen this document, correct?
No.
No. It may be worth sending it to him just to have them take a quick look at it.
I think that's what our meeting was going to be about when we, back in September.
When we, yes, when we were going to bring the auditor in and discuss it with the warrant and finance and this board.
Does Chair of Warrant and Finance, William Williams, have anything to add?
No, not really. I think the major things were that we were hoping that the board of selectmen would, at least in the future, start using the right terminology, because there's reserve funds and then there's statutory reserve funds. And the statutory reserve funds and looking back on all the reserve funds that we've had the last few years, only been one and that's for the fire truck that was truly a statutory reserve fund. All the rest of them are called reserve funds, but at the end of the fiscal year, most of those are supposed to be, are supposed to be eliminated and put back into the general fund. And then the other thing was about the school. And the problem with the school was that about 70% of the budgets are already frozen based on a three-year labor negotiation with the teachers and with the staff at the school, which means that the board selectmen need to look at their, if there are alternatives such that in making a three-year commitment, you are in fact committing monies for future town meetings to approve. And that probably is not correct to do. Okay?
That's where I see the school committee doing their job to go down through that. And when they come to us with the warrant, they bring us, you know, the best warrant that they've negotiated through. So I'm not going to micromanage the school board's job. So anyone from the school board, I guess, have anything they want to say?
Right.
Both wanted to speak.
So Kim and John?
Good evening. John Ross, Principal Superintendent of the Acton School Department. I want to thank Jen for sending the document from the warrant and finance committee over to us. We had a chance to take a look at it. Kim and I went through the whole document. I know the school committee had a chance to take a look at it. And with your permission, I'm going to let Kim take over with, with some comments, but if Mary and Judy could also be seen as part of our group to come to the podium, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. This is Kim Oliver. I'm the Finance and Personnel Director at the school. Thank you for letting me speak. And one of the things I really want to say is this year, especially the Acton School Department, the school committee has worked really hard to provide transparency to the town. This year, the school committee authorized the auditors to complete a school audit separate from your town audit. This report allows transparency for the taxpayer, showing how the funds were expended compared to the budget, details of the reserve funds specific to the school and the comparison to all our state agencies. And I have a copy with me, which I'll leave for you guys tonight. The school committee also voted in a fund balance policy November of 2014 and I sent an electron.
Yeah.
So this policy basically defines all the types of fund balances based on government accounting standards. So this policy is reviewed annually by Bill, by our town auditor. He specifically confirms a calculation for our undesignated fund balance. These calculations also meet the compliance for the Department of Education statute for the undesignated fund balance, which was brought up in the document about the 3%. Our policy is very specific and exactly of what it says in the state statute and we do follow that. Again, that's one of the things the auditor reviews when we have our annual audit. So, but tonight I'm here to discuss specifically the comments regarding the school department. Within the document, the terminology and how warrants were written, the specific comments regarding to the school, it was stated in the document that the special town meeting to fund public education had been understood to fund education for the upcoming new fiscal year and accepted by longtime residents as such. However, it had been stated in the warrant that the fiscal years were never stated in the warrant or in individual articles and thus is often confusing on the part of new residents. Our school budget that we present every year has our fiscal year that we are budgeting for right on the front of the, the book. It's provided beforehand, it's also provided the fiscal year within. But specifically, Article 15, it says, "To see what sum the town of Acton will authorize the school committee to expend for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2000, that following year, and the ending June 30th." So it is in our warrants and it is in our school budget report. Also, the recommendations for these articles also contain the fiscal years within the recommendation. Secondly, it states that "The requirements for the town oversight has been lessened and these changes have been brought on by the reliance of information by the Maine Education Association and Department of Education, which slants to larger school systems." The school has to follow statutes of education under Title 20A, including the rules for budgets and school finance. So with regard to municipal schools such as Acton, Title 20A, Chapter 111 Municipal Schools, it states that "Notwithstanding any other law, municipal school budgets developed after January 1st, 2008 must follow the same school budget requirements as regional school units pursuant to Chapter 103." It also states that "The school committee or school board shall determine the allocation of the approved school budget among the cost centers of the cost center summary budget format." So in other words, I, I know I have a lot of people that say, "Well, we don't like how the articles are written. You always have to have the cost centers first." You have, it doesn't matter. We have to follow the law. Okay? Under Education Part 7, under School Finance, under the Essential Programs and Services, it's very specific on how to write the article. So Article 13, which says, "To see what sum the municipality will appropriate," the whole article is written within the state statute. You have to write those articles specifically to that. Okay? So I understand the school articles seem daunting, but they have specific purposes for and how funding is allocated for the essential programs and services. And Acton has to follow the same rules as every school in the state of Maine. With regards to lessening the, the town's obligation or overseeing the school, I also had issues with that. Under Title 20A, also Part 7, Chapter 601, it says, "Money appropriated for public schools for education and purposes may be paid from the treasury of a municipality by the treasurer for the municipality with a written order of the municipal officers, following a receipt of bill of items certified by the superintendent schools and approved by the majority of the school board." We do that every other week. A warrant is submitted up here with complete details of everything that we spent, what was spent for grants, what was spent for regular operating, with a request from the treasurer. And nothing can be expended until the treasurer actually transfers money into the school checking account. So there's always an oversight by this town. Okay? It's not, we go out and spend it. No, the town allows us to spend it. This is how the process for the warrants have been handled, as long as I know, between the school and the town. The school has five elected school officials on the school committee. That number has not decreased over time. So again, I don't see how the town has decreased in town oversight, as it was written in the document. The Warrant and Finance document discusses the reserve accounts and their legality. These assigned credit reserve accounts were established in April 2015. The town of Acton's elective body voted to create these reserve funds, transfer funds from undesignated funds, and allowed expenditure from these funds. These articles were also very specific in their purpose and how they would be used for unexpected expenditures. So these reserve funds are accounted, are accounts that are provided as a reserve to assist in continuing normal operations without increasing the tax rate. Okay? So, and the last thing is, as the personnel director, the final area I'd like to discuss is collective bargaining. Maine State Statute Title 26, Labor and Industry, under Municipal Public Employers' Labor Relations Laws, it says that "It is the obligation of the public employer and the bargaining agent to bargain collectively." So collective bargaining means to meet at reasonable times and to confer and negotiate in good and faith with respect to wages, hours, working conditions, and contact grievances. It is expensive to go through negotiations and the process can be lengthy. So to negotiate on an annual basis would be really costly. Both sets, I've had, when I first started, one collective bargaining didn't go, went in through the six months of the following year. And then this last one went through the summer. So to try to do that on an annual basis, I'm not really sure how feasible that would be or financially responsible that would be. So, but each, even though we have a three-year contract, each employee is only giving an annual salary, pay and benefits. So if the town voted to say, "We're going to decrease Article 2 for, you know, salaries and benefits for, for art, for regular instruction," it would be up to the superintendent and the school committee to determine how they would handle that decrease. And collective bargaining always has a rif contract. So in other words, if for some reason you don't have enough money to cover all those teachers under the collective bargaining agreement, the last person in is usually the first one out. Okay? So it's not frozen as it's been stated in this article. There's always, you know, I don't want to go down the road, but there's always other ways out, so. So I just want to thank you for your time and if you require anything further from the school, please contact me. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for explaining also the thought about the collective bargaining and whatnot, because I know that was one of their, you know, one of the big concerns with the warrant and finance. And when they brought it up, it's like, yeah, yeah, it does make somewhat sense, but really it's no different than our regular budget for the town. We know every year that we have, well, we got fire truck payments, we have window payments, we have heating, we have electrical. If the town doesn't vote any of those down, we've got to find the money somewhere. So.
It's the same.
You can exactly, so you folks do the same thing. If, if that does get voted down and that, or gets cut in that area, you might take it from the paper side of it and move, yeah, however you need to, okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Judy or Mary, would you like to add anything?
One.
Thank you.
The only one thing that I would add is, there's been some conversation, also Judy Shane, School Committee Chair, there's also been some conversation about having other people on the, on the negotiating teams. And that would not be allowed according to our school law. And a school committee is totally an agent of the legislative body and we're bound to go by the guidelines, which are very clear as far as collective barging, bargaining is concerned. So, yeah, Kim did a great job. I have nothing, nothing to add beyond that.
Thanks.
Thank you. So in regards to the recommended actions that are listed out on page nine and 10, it looks like there are 10 of them. Does the direction, the board have any direction?
Well, I don't, personally, I don't think it would be a bad idea to send it off to the auditor and just have him take a look at it, see if there's anything in there that pops up to him that says, "Well, maybe we could do something a little better here or change something there." But other than that.
Can I just add one more thing?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I, I meant to say this when I was up here. I actually did send it to Bill Hall and the auditor and he was like, he, he really didn't have anything to say. He couldn't really understand why it was being put in place or, okay.
So you sent the school portion or the whole?
I sent the whole thing.
Okay.
Can you forward me Bill Hall's email that he sent you?
Yep.
Or did he reply in writing?
He actually, he, no, no, he did reply by email as well and I will forward that to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'll get that, forward it to you and you can review it. Anything else?
No. Order of Municipal Officers.
So every year pursuant to MSRA 906, you're required to sign an order that instructs the town, the tax collector and the treasurer, any payments that come in to be applied to the oldest year first.
Oh.
It's a requirement from the state.
Order, that kind of order, okay. Should I read this? "We, the municipal officers of the town of Acton, upon request of the tax collector treasurer of the town of Acton hereby authorize and direct said tax collector/ treasurer pursuant to Title 36 Maine Revised Statutes Annotated Section 906 to apply any tax payment received from an individual as payment for any property tax against outstanding or delinquent taxes due on said property in chronological order, beginning with the oldest unpaid tax bill, provided however that no such payment may be applied to any tax for which an abatement, application, or appeal is pending unless approved in writing by the taxpayer."
Make a motion, we sign the order of municipal officers.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Rec Committee Appointments.
So they have found two more volunteers?
Yay. "To, to Lisa Gore and Jonathan Botell. The selectmen of the municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws of the state of Maine hereby appoint you as a recreational committee member within and for the municipality of Acton until June 30th, 2018."
Make a motion, we appoint Lisa Gore and Jonathan Botell to the Recreation Committee.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Thank you, Lisa and Jonathan. Okay, we're at the public comment section. I'll remind you that you're, we've increased it to three minutes per person once.
Hi, Lois Missou. I'm back at the Hebo-Hibo because I couldn't, I couldn't talk while Tom was at this. My biggest thing is, as I did respond to Jen, I gave her some information from the state, state recommendation on that. I don't know if she forwarded it.
Which I forwarded to the board.
Yep.
Okay, and that was part of what I found from my gentleman who actually works on private and public roads out of the state of Augusta, and no, we have not, the seven of us on this board, and no, I have not been able to get a hold of all seven because unfortunately most of them have gone to Florida. So, and until I can meet with all of us, I can't, I can't do anything more. My hands are tied.
What are you, what are you trying to do?
As far as the opening on the Hebo-Hibo.
Mm-hmm. What specifically are you trying to?
Well, we own to the middle of the road, and you guys want to open it up, and there's things that go behind that when you open it.
Dennis Long, the first thing I'd like to do is thank the selectmen for extending the time, because usually it takes me about a minute to get started, and when it was two minutes, they only gave me a minute to talk, so, and I talked very slow. Two things, on these sand bids, I was very concerned last week as a resident of Acton that you put something out to bid, and people in good faith put a bid on it, and then you don't purchase. Like last year, they didn't purchase any sand. And to reference to, it happened to a gentleman a few years back by a road commissioner in this town, that he needed 1,000 yards of four-inch crushed gravel that he was going to purchase for rebuilding a section of road. And he went to work and he processed 1,000 yards, and then the road commissioner decided that he didn't want it. He was going to use green gravel instead. And this particular gentleman went through an expense of doing this, just like these people in anticipation of what these different towns want for sand, they don't wait till January to be processing this. If they, if they've got contracts for 50,000 yards of sand, that's what they do up and they get it ready. So hopefully this year, they won't be left out doing all this work for nothing, so I understand somebody being a little disappointed, shall we say, when they got the bid and the town never bought any of their product, because it was money that they spent. So they lost money, in essence. The other thing is, I was hoping with my comment about Buzzel Road last week, that the selectmen would have checked with MMA to see if I was right when I said that the town must maintain the town way, and the selectmen don't have the authority to say that we're not going to do that. That can only be done by the vote of the people at town meeting. But it wasn't on the agenda, so I don't know if it just went over everybody's head, if it was just forgotten, or I didn't officially ask for the question.
It might have been missed. I think it was missed.
I think probably it was. So hopefully we have an answer for next week.
So specify your question, and truth be known, I mean, so, and I'm not, we couldn't, we replayed the video two or three times, I couldn't make out what we were saying. We had some mic issues, which Eric can attest to, and I just, I couldn't make, I couldn't make heads or tails of what your question really was. So elaborate it one more time for me, and I'll make sure that if the board wants me to forward it to MMA, we will.
The history...
Right, of Buzzel Road.
Is, I think it was in 2010, the road committee, both road commissioners and the selectmen, agreed that the town road was at the bottom of the hill. Okay? Where it hits Lakeside Drive. Bill Gannon had made that presentation, and all three selectmen agreed. I have the minutes of that meeting if you guys would like to see it. Then, and we had an easement from Ron Crawford for the snowplows to turn around at Crawford's pit, just past the end of the tile where the town hall was plowed. Then, in 2011, it was decided that the town road ended at Buzzel Farm, which we have deeds to say that. So the road, the selectmen at the time told the road commissioners not to plow to the bottom of the hill without authority, but the road commissioners did what they said. And then, the selectmen, at some point, told the road commissioners not to go past the fork.
So essentially, I want to cut you off.
And I'm saying the selectmen don't have the authority to do this.
You believe that a portion of Buzzel Road is, should be town maintained, because it's a...
The path is townway.
Let me, I'll look into it, it'll be on next week's agenda.
To the Buzzel Farm or Fallow?
To the...
Lakeside.
This is, however, I mean, state statute is very clear that the selectmen don't have the authority. The selectmen, the selectmen have the authority quasi-judicial thing to say that a town, this road is a town road by evidence that's been given to the selectmen. The selectmen have the right by law, but they don't have the right to say it's not.
Okay. Your time is up. Thank you.
Well, it wouldn't have been so long if I hadn't been asked a question.
I know, we haven't clarified yet. That's okay.
I don't know if I got an answer about the cleanup on the Hopper Road Bridge. Can we arrange for the neighbors to do this? It's the end of October, I was here in July. We've had offers. It should be done before winter. We do volunteers for everything else. These are the neighbors, they have to look at it every day. I'd just like an answer, is this a yes or no? And can we check into, I mean, don't you want it cleaned up, for crying out loud?
We, well, we don't have authority to tell you, you can paint the dam. That's not our business to give that authority.
Well, no, but we can clean up our half of the bridge. We can treat it right next to the concrete, which it says, I have the book, which describes exactly what we should do for maintenance on that, and it'll make it a lot easier. Also, I don't believe that we've gotten the 2017 report in from the state of Maine yet. They'll be inspecting it before snowfall, and I'd like to see that. But please make a decision on this, because it's a mess. That's, that's too bad. And, and we can, I'm sure that you can find a way to get the insurance.
When you say treat it, what, what needs to be treated?
Well, right next to one, right next to the concrete where brush has been cut, it has to be recut and painted with Roundup, because you don't want the roots going into the concrete. And it can't be sprayed, because it's next to the water.
Yeah.
And they explain very explicitly, and I did get a copy of that book, and gave it to the, I gave it to you, Jennifer, did you pass it on?
Yes.
It explains explicitly how to do it. And there are people that want to do this job, and come on, it's November, it's going to freeze. So I'm just saying, take a vote, make up your minds, and let's do something.
So you're specifically right now looking for brush cleanup, not necessarily painting?
Well, I, I think you should treat it with concrete sealer, and also put a patch on the rebar on the top of it that's exposed, and fill the hole that's on the downstream side that's running the water underneath. These are small, just basic annual maintenance repairs, and no maintenance has been done on this bridge for quite a few years. We've got to hold on to it until we get a design, and we're two to four years from there, so let's at least try to keep it, try to do what we can to preserve it. When we lose it, it's going to be really hard on a lot of people on that road.
What do you think the expense is in the materials?
Very little. I'll, I'll check it for you. The, I'll get in touch with the paint company and find out. I think basically your expense would be the concrete sealer, and I can't imagine that's hugely expensive. Your labor would be your big cost if it weren't free.
For, for, full disclosure to the board, so the last time she made this request, as far as bringing the volunteers up, Elise and I had a conference call with Mr. Winchell, the road commissioner, and Elise can fill you in on his thoughts of it, but we did, we did follow up and ask him.
He did say he was supposed to be coming through with a chipper.
Well, this has been week after week. As a matter of fact, it's been since July 17.
It is his chipper though.
And the first maintenance request from the, from the state came through in April, explaining that maintenance had to be done, and that's how you preserve it. So I hate to sound like the nag, but I, I think it's important we preserve our infrastructure. We can't afford to replace it right now.
I will have to, we'll call Dave tomorrow again and get a time deadline on it.
And he has the book, I have no problem with Dave doing it, but it needs to be done.
We shouldn't have volunteers down there.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I think if it was a roadside cleanup, I'd have no problem with volunteers. I do get a little nervous when you're getting people near the water and the dam and, and all that, so.
We'll call him tomorrow.
Thank you.
William Williams again with Warrant Finance. We've been besieged by a number of people who have told us about the fact that personal property assessments are not made by the Board of Selectmen for a number of retail entities. The one specifically, I'm not going to mention the name in public, I will send you an email as far as the name is concerned, because I don't think the taxpayer had anything to do with this. But about three years ago, it was decided by the Board of Selectmen not to assess that for personal property at that particular site, and it's never been rescinded. We're still not taxing the entity in 2017. Now, I don't know whether or not this was just decided amongst the Board of Selectmen. I can't find any evidence that a town meeting occurred and which they gave permission to quit taxing somebody. But looking at personal property valuation from 2008 forward, our evaluation for personal property tax in this town in 2008 was greater than $3 million. It's now less than $100,000. What's happening? Has the auditor caught this? Has the auditor said anything to you all about that? As far as the town, as I said, we can't find any evidence that the town gave permission for you to not tax certain people, and neither the legislative body, the town meeting by state law, or the Board of Selectmen may opt out of assessing any personal property, otherwise it's taxable under state law. And I would appreciate you all looking into this particular matter. I will email you the retail entity that is involved that I know of, and to find out from the auditor, has there truly been that big a drop in our valuation of property tax? Is it because, and I'm told, and this is just rumor, and I'm embarrassed to even say it, but I was told that the Board of Selectmen decided that it was too much trouble to do that type of thing for the amount of money that they received as far as taxes were concerned. I don't know if that's true. However, it needs to be looked at, because in these times in which we're getting our own property taxes increased because of need for monies, and we have people who have been taken off the rolls as far as personal property tax, that's wrong. And I thank you.
Dr. Williams, oh, go ahead.
So he's referring to Apple Valley Campground. And the, and a bit of clarification, so one of the reasons that they stopped, stopped doing personal property assessments down there is because you weren't doing it townwide. And, because if you're going to assess personal property, that means that, we'll use Dennis as an example, that every excavator, every, you know, piece of equipment that he has and is on his property that's not registered has to be assessed in personal property. So the way that it, that it was many, many years ago is that the, the people that rented down there had some sort of camper down there, they either got their own personal property bill, or they came in and paid excise on what the vehicle was, on what the trailer was worth if it wasn't being registered. It was actually at the recommendation of the auditors, and it's been quite a few years, but I can pull some documents for you for next year, that we stopped doing that because we weren't treating everybody the same. As far as the decrease in personal property, that goes from, the biggest thing on that is the CMP went from, their power lines went from being taxed under personal property to real estate, so that shift happened there. We had a big hit when the restaurant at 559 Route 109, the gas tanks and all that store, all that came out. Small businesses that have, the only personal property that we can tax now legally is personal property that people, that they register with us. For example, signs, you know, Pepsi signs that might be at the foot of the lake, or, you know, if the Stanton's had a copy or lease through their business, you know, that they're, they're required to record with us, that's what we, that's what we tax. It was either you have to tax the entire town the same as personal property, and yes, part of what, what Dr. Williams said is true in regards to, towns have the right in Maine to decide if they're going to tax personal property. If you check with surrounding towns in York County, I think that you might find one or two that do, and, you know, we certainly could take that survey, but you either have to spend the money on the assessor to treat everybody the same, meaning visit every single property and assess personal property, or not do it at all. And that was the decision made then. We can, you know, I'll look into whether or not it was a legal decision, I mean, it was a recommendation of the auditor at the time.
Please, please, please do, because according to what MEA says, that you, as a Board of Selectmen or as the town meeting, do not have the right to opt out of assessing people for personal property, which is taxable under state law.
Right. I will get you to follow it for next week.
The other, the other item that I had on this whole thing is, you can't pick out people that you're not going to tax and pick out others that you are...
Well, right, and that's why they stopped taxing that particular campground, is because they weren't taxing anybody else in town.
But as far as other retail entities, and the valuation to have gone from $3.6 million in valuation down to under $100,000 while we're raising property taxes, doesn't make a lot of sense. And I, over my 180 seconds, and I apologize.
Tom Cashin for the Conservation and Forestry Committee meeting. I am hopeful that the town clerk and/or the select board will enable the Conservation and Forestry Committee to work in agreement with all other committees that might be involved with the Hebo-Hibo Road, and make sure that there's an understanding of Loya Lenkowski's email to us on the day before our last meeting with the board, where he says, "A public easement exists over Hebo-Hibo Road, which will provide access to the town forest lots." That's a quote from the last sentence, and I'm just concerned that, given the perception on some folks, that they might want to utilize their abutting strip of land, which comprises their part of the public easement, i.e., if there are property owner A on one side, property owner B on the other, they both own to the center line of the road. But in order to put forth the notion that you want to utilize that property to the center line of the road negates the idea of a public easement. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess, is there any follow-up on that?
Well, I think I'd like to clarify that even if you, you know, quote, "own to the center line," that doesn't mean you can utilize, like you said, up to the center line. I think you have to have so much, that's what I like to clarify.
Hi, John Ross, Superintendent Principal of the Acton School Department. Budget season is almost upon us, and I just wanted to recognize and thank the Warrant Finance Committee. Many of the members are here tonight, that last year's process was very smooth, transparent, and amicable, and we're looking forward to doing that again. I think all but one Warrant Finance Committee member made it to every one of our meetings right through the whole process. And also, I see it's on your agenda, but I'll mention it too. Trunk or Treat is this Saturday, and if you want to see the kids and the families of Acton come out en masse, come on over to the school at 4 o'clock. It's quite, quite a fun time. Go over and have some apple cider with us. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment before we...
You know I'm not done. I have two things for you. Law &amp; Waterhouse, citizen, not financing, warrant finance. Somebody hit your lovely wall out there just to the right of the stairway, push the bricks in. Take a look. Take a look at it.
Up front here?
Yes. It was done with automobile, probably, or a truck, being as the top stones are the ones that are pushed in.
Okay.
The other thing I want to mention is our beautiful new entryway. We have a safety hazard.
It's still not done.
Okay.
It's not done.
It's not done. The cone should still be there. It's not done.
No, I'm just, I'm just pointing this out.
Yeah, I'm just telling you before you get too far, when the cones are gone, and I cut the ribbon, it'll be done. We're still waiting for a couple of things. One of the railings on the back.
Thank you.
That's the round piece. The round welding work takes longer than the straight piece, so he did that one first.
I just, just wanted to bring up that that is a safety hazard.
I'm on it.
You know, I should have known. I'm sorry. I apologize.
I'm just saying, trying to save you some time.
Thank you.
Thank you for extending the time.
Moving on to announcements, the Lions Club is having a turkey dinner on the 28th, a Saturday, from 4:00 to 6:00 at the Shapley Church, Corner Church. And we also like to thank the Lions Club for cleaning and organizing the kitchen and the cabinets, and also for donating money for the Fuel Assistance Program. "Trunk or Treat," like John said, is on the 28th, 4:00 to 5:30 at the school parking lot. We're still taking candy donations. There's boxes here at the town hall, the transfer station, and probably at the school. Crock Fest for the library is Saturday, November 4th, from 5:00 to 7:00. We're still looking for people to enter their best chili or chowder. You can contact the library for more information. The state election is Tuesday, November 7th, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Town Hall and Transfer Station will be closed on Veterans Day, November 11th, and the library will also be closed. Town Hall closed on Thanksgiving, the Thursday, the 23rd, and November 24th, as well as the library. Town moratorium election is the 28th, from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. The polls will be open. Board of Selectmen office hours for, we have December listed here. Is that supposed to say November?
Yep.
No.
No, those are December dates. Just jumping ahead.
I'll just remind you, the first three Thursdays.
Second, 9th, and 16th.
Two, 9th, and 16th.
And the 7th, 14th, and 21st.
Yep. 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. Upcoming meetings, we have the public hearing tonight for the marijuana moratorium at 7:00. The cemetery committee meets October 26th at 5:00 p.m., and the marijuana committee is meeting October 27th at 6:00 p.m. The next Board of Selectmen meeting will be October 31st at 5:00.
I think there's a Camp Road Committee meeting tomorrow.
Camp Road Committee meeting tomorrow night at?
6:00.
6:00 here.
And it's not listed on there, because it's not a town meeting, it's not filmed, so we're not, I don't advertise it, so.
Okay.
I can add it if you'd like, but that's why it's not on there.
Okay.
Because it's not an official town meeting.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor. Good night.